Welcome, everyone. This is a special committee of the whole meeting. Today is January 29th, 2025. I want to welcome you to the Beverly Public Schools School Committee Committee of the Whole and let you know that we are using a hybrid remote model just in case one of our members, who is not feeling well, can join us remotely. But we are broadcasting and recording thanks to BEVCAM. They are available on their broadcast channel, Channel 6, as well as High Definition 1073. They also maintain a government YouTube channel that is streaming our meeting in real time. Thank you so much, BEVCAM. Beginning on June 16th, 2021, with the Chapter 20 of Acts of 2021, which were twice extended and now further extended till March 31st, 2025, local governments and boards were granted provisions to, among other things, hold meetings remotely by suspending the need for a quorum and chair to physically be present. It asks our body to use technical methods to allow for safe public access. As a note, Beverly also has prior approval for remote participation of members, although when this act and its extensions expire, the chair and quorum do physically need to be present. Tonight is a Committee of the Whole meeting, which means members of the public do not have an opportunity to address the body. The next opportunity will be at our regular school committee meeting on February 12th. I want to let people know that we have established an email address, residentvoice@beverlyschools.org, that may be used to sign up in advance to receive a link to the Zoom meetings if you wish to be remote for those addresses, or you may sign up at the podium. You must limit your remarks to three minutes and provide your real name and address for the record. Joining us today are members of the school committee and members of the leadership and administrative team. I will conduct a roll call in just a moment to make sure we know everyone who is participating, both in person and remotely. I do want to encourage anyone that is participating remotely to mute your line as any background noises may cause a distraction and become part of the permanent meeting record. And now, let's see who's here. In person, we have Mayor Cahill.
Here.
We have Kenan McKenzie de Franza.
Here.
Karen Robinson.
Here.
Jeffrey Silva.
Here.
Larynda Visnick.
Here.
I'm Rachel Abel. We are also joined by Principal Mark Thomas and Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Bethany Splansky. We have our Director of Finance, Emma Puglisi.
Yeah.
And our Executive Director of Operations and some other data things. I overlearned that. Erin Brown.
Here.
Joining us remotely, we have Dr. Dorothy Flaherty, our Assistant Superintendent.
Here.
And we have Dr. Andre Morgan, who is our Director of Belonging and Opportunity, Access, Equity. Yes, and Belonging, thank you. Okay. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. This is a relatively short special agenda for the Committee of the Whole. We're going to start with a pledge of allegiance, and then we have one open item on our agenda, which I'll describe in a moment, and then a brief executive session. If I could ask Ms. Larynda Visnick, it's, I think your turn. I try to go around in a circle. We have a flag up here. If you would lead us in the pledge, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Okay, so our first agenda item that is in open session is a discussion on the parameters of the superintendent search and a vote for the search to commence. And I wanted to provide some background because I realized that our Committee of the Whole Retreat, where we had received a letter from Dr. Trocheck, was not streamed live on BEVCAM. So I want to inform the public that on January 22nd, at the Committee of the Whole Retreat, the school committee did receive a letter in advance of the January 30th, 2025 deadline from her contract that the superintendent is intending to retire. The school committee at that moment recognized that other districts have already begun their superintendent searches and that it would behoove us to have this special Committee of the Whole meeting this evening dedicated to deliberations on how we would conduct a search and vote to commence said search. Due to open meeting laws, we are prohibited from discussing outside our posted meetings, which is why this is an open session. The chair was asked to collect information in advance to facilitate tonight's discussion and deliberations, and so that's why I have presented a slide deck for us tonight. And as I mentioned previously, at the conclusion of this agenda item, the Committee of the Whole does have a brief executive session to have a discussion on different matters, and that will not be open to the public. Oops. Using too many computers here. Okay. Tonight, we really have three objectives to get the ball rolling, so to speak. So tonight, we must decide as a body what type of search we are interested in conducting. We have options that range from an external search that could have a regional, a national, or a global scope, and then there is what is considered an internal search. And then, once we have had some discussion and deliberations, we can also talk about the types of services that are available to be contracted if we're interested and discuss the types of advertisements and placements we might want to make. And then, the third item is an agreement for a search or screening committee to be formed, and so we would need to discuss the application and any deadlines we might want to set for that. We also have our regular school committee meeting planned for February 12th, and depending on the decisions we have made tonight and what contracts and services we potentially would employ, we would need to establish rather quickly our timelines. And it's sort of an end loaded. We kind of want to back up to the first Monday of June so that a candidate would have an opportunity to visit our schools while school is in session. And then, of course, establishing the screening or search committee and confirm that members that apply have the availability based on the timelines and the schedule that is established. And then, we also would potentially authorize the chair to implement a stakeholder survey, either with our consultants, if we choose one, et cetera. So those are sort of the main items that we need to consider. I think that a number of us have served previously on a superintendent search committee, as well as principal search committees, and they are a very prescribed set of processes that ensure both the confidentiality of the candidates that are applying, as well as the details about which steps are taken in the process. So we'll learn more about that. I wanted to provide some information about external searches. External searches can be with a search consultant that provides full service. A selection consultant could be an executive recruiter. They could have different experience looking for superintendents or other executive positions. Some of the names that are familiar to this group are the Collins Center. They're located at UMass Boston, and they are the firm that the school committee elected to use over six years ago when we first did our external search. I did reach out to them. They would not be able to provide a quote without having some further discussion about the parameters, and they need to identify a resource. The person that we had used previously is not currently available to conduct a superintendent search, and so there would need to be some discussion about what sorts of resources they might have. The other option is the MAS-C. We're a member of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. They have a field rep. They also have some designated resources that are specialized in search projects. I did reach out to them, and their current estimates are $11,500 for the contract, but they also incur expenses for travel, et cetera. So the budget would be $11,500 to $15,000. And then, there is another organization that does executive searches. It's NESDEC. I did reach out to them. However, I have not heard back, and I learned later that we're actually not members anymore because we tried to save some money. So I will forward along any information I do receive, but if we're really keen on making decisions tonight, I would say that that would be a little bit complicated in that we would have to reestablish our membership probably before we could get a quote. In terms of limited service, the MAS-C group actually told us that they provide technical assistance under the existing membership that we already pay. So they would be on-call and available to advertise and help us with the technical aspects of a search, but they wouldn't send a person necessarily to each of our sessions. So that is an option that I felt that I needed to bring forward to the committee. So again, that is part of our annual dues that we pay already as MAS-C members. If they incurred expenses for advertising or anything along those lines, of course, we would be responsible for those. And then, there's a potential for other-like consultants, so people that either were formerly employed by MAS-C or people that work in different educational groups. It was really hard without having an idea of what type of search the school committee was looking for to obtain any quotes or do more research on that, but that was certainly one other option that we can mention. And then, there is the self-service option, as I labeled it here. That would be where the chair and an administrative leader could coordinate using some of the tools and templates that we already have on hand from both MAS-C and the Collins Center to figure out a schedule and run the process. I believe when we had Mr. Hammond in the HR department, you know, he was instrumental in a lot of the principal search committees and things along those lines where we didn't hire out a consultant. And then, of course, I just, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that there's always the option for a school committee to appoint an interim superintendent. This is generally reserved for a case where a search fails. Obviously, when you do a search, you're hoping to get a lot of qualified candidates that are interested in applying for your position, and part of the impetus of having this meeting tonight is to make sure we get our advertisements out there and so that it is broadcast wide and loudly that Beverly is interested in hiring a superintendent to join us. So I just wanted to add that. People had questions about the search and screening committee makeup, and I pulled our files from the last time that we had a superintendent search committee, and I also looked at some of the search committees for neighboring districts that just conducted successful searches. And so I would just outline that generally, we are trying to have a representative group that can represent Beverly to the candidates, as well as evaluate the candidates to make a recommendation to the school committee. And so, for school committee members, there's generally two, and just due to open meeting law and some of the quorum rules, we could not have more than three since we're a seven-member body because it would be a recommendation coming to the whole school committee for a vote. We could not have four members. And then, the next group is generally teachers, paraprofessionals, members of our Unit B, which includes some of our assistant principals and other leaders in our district. Usually, you try to have someone that represents the elementary level, the middle school level, and the assistant principal. In our past experience, we had a high school teacher who was also a president of the BTA. In this case, we have a co-president that's at the middle school level, so that might be something to consider. But these are all general recommendations we can discuss. Caregivers and parents. Generally, we have one at the elementary level in prior years or prior searches. These have been members of our CPAC or LPAC, which is our English Learner and our Special Ed Parent Advisory Committees. We've also had someone at the middle school level and someone at the high school level. So these can be parents, caregivers. They could have kids at multiple ages and multiple levels of our school district and wear, you know, different hats. From the administration, generally, we would have someone that is in our Special Ed Department or English Learners Department to provide some perspective, as well as an elementary-level principal, a middle school or high school principal, and some sort of district administrator, someone that would be working directly with the superintendent. So it could be Director of Finance or Operations, et cetera. And then, there's usually a community member, someone who doesn't have children in the district but represents our community. So it could be someone from Beverly Bootstraps or the YMCA or the Rotary. There's like an endless list of potential community participants that would be welcome to apply and serve on the committee to add some additional perspective, as well as give candidates a good flavor of the community in which they would serve. And then, student voice is one of the things that we have always valued in our district. The commitment to be on the screening committee is rather robust, meaning that it's a short timeline with frequent meetings of a significant duration, and so we have to respect the fact that our students are students first. But in the prior search committee, we had a student council president that made availability a priority and was able to participate fully in the committee. In other districts, they have a student and an alternate just to make sure that the student voice is not lost in the process. And then, of course, a facilitator, if we, as a school committee, decide we want to hire or bring in someone to help lead the search. So as I mentioned, we're likely going to receive lots of interested people. I can attest that I've had about 20 people contact me already to ask what the process would be, and I said, please watch this meeting tonight. We will decide what our process is going to be, and we will be working on a timeline. And availability is a really key component to being able. These obviously are just what we used last time, but certainly open for discussion and/or could be part of our February meeting. Questions were what personal characteristics, skills, background, experience, and core values are needed in the next Beverly superintendent? What are three of the most important issues for the superintendent to address in his or her or their first six to 12 months? What are the strengths of Beverly Public Schools, and what are we looking to preserve? How would our ideal leader address equity, belonging, and opportunity throughout our district? And then, obviously, soliciting additional comments from anyone that should wish to participate in a stakeholder survey. I mean, that's kind of the model. For the Collins Center, when we worked with them, they actually had significantly more time to do focus groups and to generate a report for us. I think it's worth the committee revisiting the information we received from stakeholders, even though it was six years ago. I will be making that available to members after tonight's meeting. I just didn't want to overwhelm you because it's quite volum- there's a lot of information. Can't speak tonight. And I think it would be important for us to, you know, take into consideration what members of our community have already shared with us as important attributes of our district. So the profile and the decision really would be one of the tasks for the search and selection committee to conduct in its initial meetings, but it's based on input from stakeholders And then, I have some possible motions here, but I didn't fill in any specifics whatsoever because I am opening the discussion now for us to be inquisitive, ask questions. I think three of us have participated in a superintendent search. More of us have participated in principal searches, and that's where we are at this Ms. Robinson.
I'd like to authorize the chair to begin an external search for our next superintendent. Second.
So Karen Robinson, and I heard Kenan McKenzie. And I heard Dr. McKenzie de Franza. Do we want to take each step, step by step? External search, no parameters of who or what or anything at this point? An external search, using a search selection committee, using internal research? It's just an external search? Yeah, do you want to add anything to that, or is that the motion? We can do it step by step.
I think we can stick with that for now.
Okay, okay. So there's a motion on the table to conduct an external search for our superintendent for Beverly Public Schools. Is that correct? Okay. And we have a second discussion. Ms. Visnick.
I'd like to say a couple of things in, in no particular order. I'm quote-unquote "old enough" to remember when we, as a body, although maybe nobody else was here at the time, other than Mayor Mike and I, did not promote from within three incredible individuals. Mr. G from the middle school is my first name I'm going to throw down. Mr. Conant from the middle school, second name, and the third name is Dr. Bauer. There was much community angst that we lost those incredible individuals, very talented, to surrounding communities. You have my favorite one now. And so, I just want to acknowledge that because I understand and respect the decision of this body, if in fact, we choose to go external. Also understand and respect that even if we go external and we hire internal, it, just some of the history needs to be, I feel strongly, some of the history needs to be revisited because I feel like, no matter what, we're in a no-win situation. If we go external and we bring in somebody external and we lose the next Dan Bauer, we're going to hear a lot of grief about that, and we're going to feel that ourselves as a community and as a voting body. I also want to remind people that when we did this six years ago, so whoever was on this body six years ago, or however long ago it was, right? Excuse me, the body voted to just do internal. It was as split a vote as you can get. The community made its unhappiness with that vote very well-known, and to its credit, this body then reconsidered, thanks to Robert's Rules, and we then revoted and we did do an external search. So again, I think that there's something to be said for that. I want to, you know, give a little bit of credit where credit is due in terms of revisiting some of the history and acknowledging where this body, whether it's the people in the room right now or just this body and name, have really tried to work hard to do the right thing. Because I don't think that that's the sentiment that is commonly being spewed right now. Rather, we're being accused of having ill intent. And so, I just want to bring those forward. And the last thing I want to say is that as the Chair of FNF, I do, I'll tip my hand relative to how I'm going to vote on this, but I do believe that there's value in using an external entity, but there's also a cost associated with it, and we have quite a large stack of costs that are the result of a recent disruption in services. So I think we need to acknowledge that as well, and we need to say, you know, have at least some kind of a discussion about that. You know, $10,000 to $15,000 isn't quote-unquote "nothing." It is something, and especially when we put it on top of the costs associated with other things that have happened previously, then I'm trying not to say lest I offend someone. Thank you.
Thank Dr. Silva.
Is it unusual to have a combined internal-external?
That was a question I asked six or seven years ago. It's not unusual. Basically, with an external search, we encourage internal candidates to apply, but they would have the same consideration as external candidates. Good question. I'm going to call myself real quick. I appreciate the sentiment, Ms. Visnick. I have a slightly different recollection of what happened at the last go-around, only because I waited for the mayor to leave the room when I said I wanted an external search. And I was being naughty at that meeting because I was fresh to the school committee, and I was really adamant about making sure we had all possible candidates at the table. But I think, I think that, to a large degree, there is an inherent problem with superintendent searches in that if you have the impression that there is an internal candidate that's a shoo-in for a position, you might not receive the interest in application from external candidates that might be great. And so, I appreciate the fact that sometimes, if you don't do an internal search, you might lose people, but I would hope that the right candidate, whether it's internal or external, would make an application in an external search because the kids of Beverly deserve it, that it takes a lot of bravery to put your hat into the candidate pool to be a superintendent. It takes a lot of trust that the selection committee will keep your name and candidacy confidential because often, the best candidates have pretty good gigs in other districts. It's not like there are factories of superintendents out there where we're going to have a lot of candidates, and I think it's going to be really important for us as a committee to remain super committed to the fact that we are going to treat this search professionally. We are going to do it with integrity, and that we are welcoming candidates to come see just how special Beverly is. And so, it's kind of where my heart is right now and where my brain is right now, and obviously, there's a lot at stake, and I appreciate your perspective, and I understand how it seemed at the time that it was a shoo-in for an internal candidate, but I think my memory is just a little different because I was one of those naughty, naughty school committee members at the time. So, thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to talk about the fact we have a motion for an external search for a superintendent candidate, which would imply internal candidates may apply, but they have the same consideration as external? Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. I just simply stated, I just think we owe it to our community to show that we're being as open and as transparent as possible. It's, I just think whoever rises to the top, rise to the top, and I think the more candidates we get, the better position we are to get the right person for this position.
Well said. Anyone else? Mayor Cahill.
Thanks, Madam President. So, in my time as mayor, I now have been involved in two such searches, as I would categorize them, the last superintendent search when Dr. Hershey retired, and our fire chief search when Chief Cotter retired. And in both instances, we conducted robust, external, you know, open processes, and I feel strongly that the processes made, that they had great value, and in each instance, we ended up hiring, promoting an internal candidate. And for my part, I was really reassured and reinforced in my decision in those instances based on the fact that we undertook a really open, robust, you know, good faith, deep robust, you know, good faith, deep, external search. And so, I mean, that's what makes sense to me, and I appreciate the motion.
Ms. Bisnick?
I think you're selling yourself short because I think you and I were also at the table for the superintendent's search before that, although maybe we had not officially been sworn in yet, so we maybe didn't get a vote, but we participated in that search.
That's true. We were sitting through that. Yeah, we were elected not yet in office in that December timeframe, yeah.
Okay. We have a first of many motions, it sounds like, this evening for determining that an external search for a superintendent candidate for Beverly Public Schools is our approach. Are there any other comments on that matter of fact? You were the second.
No, I mean, we were adding this part to the first one. Remember, we were talking about keeping
Microphone?
Your microphone, sorry. We were asked whether we want to do these in part, so we authorized, you know, we sort of, we had the motion for the first authorization. And then you said, do we want to talk about it separately with regard to internal, external? Are those separate motions, or is it one motion?
The motion is for an external search where internal candidates are free to apply with the same consideration. That's
Right. I didn't hear a second. That's what I'm asking about. Are we looking for a second to that?
Okay. So the main motion was for an external search for a superintendent candidate for Beverly Public Schools.
Right. We didn't say external in the first motion because we asked about whether that should be part of that motion or not.
Ms. Robinson, can you confirm external search?
Yes. So, we just see the second and the third bullets, we just haven't discussed those yet. So we're taken in part by just the first bullet, and then we're gonna talk about, do we want to use MASC or, correct?
Collins Center, right.
Collins Center, yeah. So that's
I'm following. What I'm saying is, the first time the motion was made, which I seconded, we authorized the search in the motion. That was the motion.
The external, she says, external search.
That was the question, whether we wanted to do internal, external, which we're talking about. So it sounds like we'd have to
It's external, external. And external means that internal candidates may apply, but have the same consideration.
I know, that's not what I'm asking, but, okay. It just sounds to me like we expanded the language from the original motion, that's all, to include that it would be external.
Okay.
Right. So I'm just clarifying because you had asked whether we wanted to do one or any other. Okay.
Okay. I want to make sure the school committee has clarity on this, and I'm also looking to see if Ms. Coilo is joined us. I don't see that she has. The motion on the table is for an external search for a superintendent for the Beverly Public Schools.
Dr. McKenzie, are you okay having seconded that motion, or are you?
Yeah, I'm just clarifying that the very first time we were asked about it, we were using this sort of formulaic language. And then Ms. Robinson said, do we, like, we were asked, do you want to make this internal, external? So we're expanding on the conversation. So I'm just making sure what we're doing is we're actually just maximizing the original motion, is what it sounds like to me, to be more specific about the kind of search.
I asked about that, and Ms. Robinson said her motion was simply to have an external search. That's the one step, and then we'll have to go through the other steps on how and who and
Yeah, I'm just clarifying that we're still on one. We're sort of expanding the language on it. Yeah, I'm fine. I understand that. Just want to be clear.
Okay. And no further comments? We're all in person, since we don't have any remote members, so all in favor of an external search for a superintendent for Beverly Public Schools? Six to zero. Okay. So we have established an external search, and now we have sort of the next layer of the onion. Do we want to engage with services, full or limited, technical, et cetera? Mayor Cahill?
Could I, whoops, thank you. Could I ask you, Madam President, or Ms. Puglisi, from where we would take the money to pay a consultant if we make that decision?
Sure. I did check in advance to make sure that reserve for negotiations did have some funds left because I know from watching the FNF, we did a lot of transfers to, obviously, make transfers to salaries. And I had confirmation that we have about $13,000 left in that account. And so, not a ton of money, and I'm sure that it probably could be used in other ways, but we do, as a school committee, have $13,000.
Okay. Question?
Ms. Bisnick?
Ms. Emma, I'm looking over at you. Potentially, could we also transfer money out of the school committee line item?
Absolutely.
I believe we have a decent chunk of money left in there that we usually use for our own internal trainings and services. I think this, we almost wouldn't have to do a transfer because this could justifiably be in that same category.
Yes. And I don't think any of us attended the conference.
So it sounds like, looking at a couple of different lines, there's sufficient funds available. Can I ask, it sounds like, I mean, I thought the Collins Center did a good job last time, but it doesn't really sound like they're available and teed up.
They're not available. They wouldn't, I had a conversation with one of the gentlemen, and they wouldn't really be able to do the scope and scale that they did the last time around. And they wanted to make sure that if they were to put a proposal together, they would be competitive, but there are a lot of question marks about just deciding how to scope it and who could actually conduct it.
And MASC, through their structure and their resources, would be ready to step in?
Yes. I actually have a contract that could be signed as soon as tonight for their services that were quoted at $11,500, and it outlines the scope and expectations. They also wanted to make sure that we were aware that as members of MASC, we are allowed access to their technical services on a remote basis. And some districts have elected to use that option with the prevalence of Zoom and remote meeting. That is something that has worked for other districts. I'm just relaying information.
Yeah. I guess if I could, my sense is, having been through this six years-ish ago, my sense is we really would be well-served by getting a consultant. And as MASC seems ready to step up, that's my thinking as we should. What do you folks think?
Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. When I was reading over the materials that you provided us, did I notice that we could use the material that we have already from the Collins Center?
We paid a lot of money for their services before.
So could we use their material and have MASC help us out? Is that allowed?
I'm sure that MASC would enjoy using their competitors' information, and I don't think we signed a non-disclosure. I'd have to investigate that. But MASC definitely has a scope of work that they've presented that's based on their templates and approach. But I'm sure, just knowing how MASC works, that they take input from their customers.
That just sounds like something that would be in our best interest.
Ms. Bisnick?
I appreciate the spirit of that idea. However, I feel strongly that we did not necessarily pay for the intellectual property. We would have to, full disclosure, I am not only a student at UMass, I am employed by UMass. So I feel that that question would have to be asked before, I don't think it's a fair assumption to say, well, we paid for the Collins Center services in the past, and therefore, the remnants of that past search are our intellectual property. Certainly, the outcome is our intellectual property. So, again, I just would want to be above board about that, if that's the path we choose, if in fact, MASC wants to, if in fact, we choose MASC, and if in fact, they want to do something they're not used to doing.
Having a professional career also where intellectual property is of the utmost importance, I would concur that we should ask UMass before we decide. But certainly, I think we all learned a lot working with them, that they can't take away our experience. Are there any other questions or comments before I ask someone from the body to make a motion for the next decision?
I'll make a motion if folks are ready for that. I move that we authorize the President to reach out to MASC and engage them to, you know, to engage their services to guide our search.
Second.
I just want to clarify, the full service, services that they quoted and gave us a contract with the scope of work. Okay.
Their services as a consulting organization, yeah.
Okay. And I heard Kenan first, just because she's sitting closer to me. So, Kenan, McKenzie.
You can try again. Next motion.
Sorry, next one, next one. I'll get you. Are there any further comments or discussion about the school committee motion to have me as Chair engage the services of MASC for their full service as outlined and scoped? Ms. Bisnick?
Again, I'm, from a transparency point of view, I will be abstaining from this vote based on my role right now with UMass.
Oh, with the other option?
With one of the other options, yes.
Okay. So you will discontinue participation in this main discussion and not vote? Are there any other discussion points with selecting MASC? Ms. Robinson?
But the third, we're not on the third one yet? Never mind.
No, those were just samples in case anyone needed words. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask if we were going to decide, you said maybe two people in the school committee, maybe three?
We're not there yet.
We're gonna discuss that here.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
So the motion on the table is to have the Chair engage the services of MASC, as they have provided a scope of work and a quote for $11,500 plus expenses, which is their full-service package. Are there any questions on the motion? Okay, all those in
Really want to constrain yourself to that monetary value you just said?
That was their all-in price, plus expenses. If we decide we need ads in the New York Times, that would be extra.
I would offer a friendly amendment
Okay.
to the motion that I'm not gonna vote on, that it say plus expenses.
I said plus expenses. I don't know. Was that clear? I mean, I maybe put those words in your mouth.
And do you want to say the base number? Oh, thank you, Bev Cam. Sorry. Do you want to say aloud the 11K, but not the 15K, and then just say 11K plus necessary expenses?
Yeah. The contract that I will sign says 11,500 plus expenses.
Plus expenses, okay.
And I believe they're reasonable expenses. Okay. Friendly amendment, the main motion is to have the Chair engage the services of MASC for their full-service superintendent search for 11,500 plus expenses. Well, do you still second that, Kenan?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I feel a lot of empathy for Liz Curran, our recording secretary, who is trying to get this all down on paper for us. Are there any more comments or questions? We're looking now for a vote of the members that are participating in the vote. All those in favor. Five, and Ms. Bisnick is abstaining. Okay. Next layer of the onion. Some of the concerns, if we go back to our first slide of decisions that we need to make tonight, is that we need to agree to have a search screening application process. In our search six years ago, it was simply that interested parties would email the then-Chair of the school committee. I think that it might behoove us to use either the search committee person themselves, or our Executive Secretary Donna Bergeron, or establish through our IT department a different process by which people could apply, whether it's a Google form or some sort of application process, recognizing that we won't be able to establish the timelines tonight until we obviously contract with MASC and have a person assigned and have their availability. But I would like to have a receptacle for people that are interested in receiving more information about the specific dates and times, and to have them confirm their interests and availability. So I think what we need to do as a body is to decide, do we want the IT department to establish a Google form type of collection that Donna has access to as our Executive Secretary? She's a confidential secretary. And then when we meet again, we would have an opportunity to talk more about the selection. I do want to say that, you know, per our policies, the Chair establishes standing committees, but I think that we need to be sensitive to the fact that I've already received 20 inquiries, and I've had to just tell everyone, wait until the school committee has decided. So, motion to ask our IT department, or, I mean, I'm just putting ideas out there, but I don't want to make the main motion.
I wish to be sensitive to asking the wonderful Miss Donna to take on yet another task. So I'm not opposed to IT setting something up, but I wonder, I just, I'm just worried about Donna and putting one more thing on her plate, and wondering if there's someone else in the district who could be responsible for that, excuse me, for that task.
We have Information Services? Yeah. Dr. McKenzie, DeFranza?
Yes, I just wanted to find out whether Erin Brown has any guidance, since this does have to be a confidential process, that we wouldn't want to just randomly assign someone to check. So I don't know if you're willing to share some thoughts on who might be an alternate, but I do agree with you to have something that's not your personal email address be the point of contact. I think that would be wise.
So in the past, we have used Donna. I mean, I think she's the Executive Secretary to this committee, and it provides for some confidentiality that you can all feel comfortable with, and that, you know, certainly could be in her scope of work in terms of that piece of it. But the IT department can put together like a general address, an email address that the Google forms go to, so it's not flooding her necessarily inbox every day, but something that she could be checking, and certainly she could sort through for the committee and give the information to the committee. So that's something we can do. Thank you.
Mayor Cahill?
Thanks. I wonder if it might make sense to ask that interested parties for the search screening committee, screening search committee, might submit emails, letters of interest to Donna. And then when we get the MASC person on board, it does say appointing a contact person, you know, gives a few options, one of them being the search consultant. So I'm wondering if for the applications for the job itself, it might go there, because that person, I mean, we would want to put the burden on them to handle all the collating and the sharing.
For the job itself, it's typically the search consultant that receives them, screens them, make sure it's a superintendent of schools and not superintendent of an apartment building. We had some of those accidental applications last time. But yeah, for the job applicants, it certainly would go through our selection consultant. I think it's more of the Chair needs to appoint the search committee or selection committee.
Gotcha. Okay, makes sense.
But based on the fact that there's so much interest, I think it needs to be a fair process that can be objective. And I thought that using our confidential Executive Secretary might be a mechanism. She already monitors our resident voice email address, so she has a separate mailbox set for that. And then also, she is on our schoolcommittee@beverlyschools.org email address as well. It seemed like a natural fit, and it seemed as an appropriate way for us to keep at arm's length until we're ready to make the next set of decisions. So I guess I'm looking for the body to give me a direction on how to instruct Donna or our IT department So I guess I'm looking for the body to give me a direction on how to instruct Donna or IT department. Yes, please. Thank you.
I move that the President instruct Ms. Bergeron to work with IT and set up a, what, an email, or use the resident voice email to collect, what, letters of interest from any interested parties who want to participate in the screening search committee. What are we calling it? Screening and search? Screening?
We've called it both. I think we, yeah.
Screening slash search.
It does both functions, and I think it depends on which consultant we use, what they call it. So that's why I kind of use both.
Can I offer an amendment to that?
Sure.
It might be worth creating a separate email for the committee search, just so that you don't have to sift through...
Instead of resident voice, yeah. So I was writing the motion, and I skipped that little part. So I said, motion to instruct Ms. Bergeron to work with IT to set up an email slash Google form for letters of interest for any screening search committee. And then I stopped writing, but participants?
Participants, yeah. And we should, can we now set a deadline? Because we know we want to get moving with dispatch. What makes sense for a deadline for those applications, so that we can, you know, then put the committee together? A week from today, a week from Friday? I mean, what if...
So we meet again on the 12th? Do we want to, is that too soon?
I was going to ask about that before we're done.
Okay.
So, well, let me say, I wonder if we might look to meet sooner than the 12th? If you're able to, you know, fairly quickly make the connections with MASC and get them on board to...
It's going to be my first call in the morning. I don't have a clear vision on availability, but we could say end of next week? I mean, I want to give a fair opportunity for this information to get out into the community.
Wednesday night, maybe a week from Friday?
What's the date of that?
February 7th is next Friday.
Okay. Do we have a fully baked motion now? Motion to instruct Ms. Bergeron to work with IT to set up an email slash Google form for letters of interest for any screening slash search committee participants with a deadline of February 7th to indicate interest. We obviously won't have the timeline. We need a commitment for those that are interested, that they can meet the date. So it'll be kind of a two-step process. Okay. Just want to make sure that's clear.
What if we said, what if we said, end of business February 10th? Give a little more time, and that's still a couple of days ahead of when we meet on the 12th.
I love building the aircraft carrier as we have planes landing. Okay. End of business, February 10th, and that would give us time before our meeting on the 12th. Okay? And who was the second on that motion? That's right. Jeffrey, it's your turn. Okay. We have a motion and a second. I'm going to repeat it to make sure we're clear. Motion is to instruct Ms. Bergeron to work with IT to set up an email slash Google form for letters of interest for any screening search committee participants with a deadline of end of business February 10th. That is our motion. Is there any more discussion? Are we ready to vote that aspect? Looks like we are. All those in favor? Six to zero. As I just mentioned, my first call in the morning, as soon as is reasonable, I will call MASC to say that we are interested in the contracted services for their full service search committee, and that we have an expedited timeline, that we are already in the process of getting interested candidates, and that we would like to establish a timeline to confirm their availability, so that on the 12th, we may formally announce that timeline or establish it, and announce screening committee. And then the last item that I'd like us to consider is a stakeholder survey, and obviously, we will let our experts at MASC design that. I had presented some questions that we had asked in the prior focus groups and surveys, but we will maybe get some permission from UMass to see if we can... They also had a really good bank of questions for candidates. And there were some definitely good things, but we'll see what MASC provides us as well. I think we accomplished what we intended to accomplish on this item, unless there are any more motions coming from the body about kicking off the search. Ms. Visnick?
How will our decisions this evening, such as whatever IT email address is going to come into Donna's hands? How will that be communicated out to the public so that everybody who might be interested, even though we can pick very few of them, can know that this process is open and to submit their...
That's a really good point. And so, we have a district website, and we have a school committee page, and we had a school committee button that was dedicated to bargaining. And I would suggest we remove that button and provide a superintendent search button. And we can perhaps have either the building principals and/or the superintendent in their weekly communications advertise the fact that there's a button available with all of the information and details, and perhaps even a link to this meeting for people that are interested in learning more. Does that sound like a plan?
Reverse 911.
We should go beyond that to the, you know, regular media outlets.
Okay.
To the extent that we're looking for a community member and, you know, things, such things, right?
That is a very good point. I bet those community members aren't going to see our district website or our connect ads.
So are you saying the city webpage, or are you saying a reverse 911? Or both?
Salem News, Patch.
I was going to say, I think I have it on good authority that Salem News is watching at home tonight or from the office. So we'll make sure that our friends at Salem News, The Patch, and Beverly Buzz are fully informed about the decisions that we've made here tonight and about the button that will exist on our website.
No, no reverse 911. Listen, maybe if there's a little more snow, Mike Collins could do both.
We'll do a check-in with Donna and find out if it's being flooded, or if she's not getting very many, then maybe we can amp up our advertisements. We each individually have candidate pages and personal pages on social media. If you elect to use social media, that might be another way. And I think we have some audience members here that are advertising for us on our behalf. So hopefully, the word gets out. Any other topics on this agenda item? Again, the agenda item is discussion on the parameters of the superintendent search and a vote for the search to commence. I guess technically, we have to take a vote for the search to commence. I do wonder, do we want to have a vote to authorize the chair to authorize MASC to start placing advertisements? I think that might be something reasonable for us to decide. Okay, so Ms. Visnick is making a vote.
Second.
To, or making a motion, and Ms. Robinson is seconding to authorize the chair to authorize MASC to start advertising. Dr. McKenzie?
Sure. Just a quick question. When we voted to authorize using their contractual services, isn't that just part of their services? Or do we have to ask specifically for that to happen?
It is part of their services, but I think that it's more of the imperative of getting the ads out before we even first meet with them. Yes?
How does that happen?
I don't know. Okay.
If I could, we're going to do a stakeholder survey, and some of that may help inform how we write the job posting.
That's true.
And I don't know that we're putting a salary range on the job posting. As we look at the one from last time, we did not. I just don't know whether we, I feel like we, last time around, approved the posting. Did we not?
It's a good question. So maybe...
Maybe it's a question for the consultant as well.
Okay, it's, okay, let's...
Don't want to make it more difficult.
I wish to withdraw my motion.
Okay, withdrawn. There we go. Okay. Cart before the horse, right? That's like the name of the game. Okay. We will be in touch after I get more information from MASC about the timelines. Okay. I think that's it for that first agenda item.
Could I just, if it, if it, if you and the MASC consultant determine that it's either necessary or advantageous to try to meet sooner than the 12th, I guess I'd like to ask that you at least give it a shot. We may not find a date and time, but if it sounds like it's going to make a difference, maybe we try to meet in the meantime?
Okay. Fair enough. I will be in touch.
Thanks.
The Chair would now like to make a motion at 9:00 PM that the school committee vote to meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for Purpose 3, and not to return to open session. Purpose 3 is to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with units A, B, C, and individual contracts, because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. And again, we will not return to open session. That is my motion. Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Call the roll. Mayor Cahill?
Did you get a second? Oh, you did, okay.
Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
Kenan McKenzie, DeFranza?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Jeffrey Silva?
Yes.
Lorraine Visnick?
Yes.
Rachel Abel, yes. By a vote of six to zero, in a roll call vote, at 9:01 PM, we are entering executive session. I thank everyone for participating this evening, joining us remotely and at home.